We'll go ahead and open the meeting at 6:30. All rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
For God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, Angela, we'll go to you for roll call of Commissioners.
Commissioner Weisong Frick, here. Commissioner Woltius. Commissioner Melzer.
Here.
Commissioner Wood.
Here.
Commissioner Journey.
Present.
Commissioner White. And Commissioner Graybill has an excused absence. So we have a call.
Okay, well, we'll move on then to our section for public comment. This is an opportunity for members of the public to address the Planning Commission on any topics that are not listed on the agenda. There are none. So we'll move on to approval of our meeting minutes from June 5.
I reviewed the minutes and believe they accurately reflect the, our meeting, and we make a motion to approve our June 5, 2025, meeting minutes.
I second.
All right, I have a motion to approve. And a second, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Right, they've been approved. So, I will open the hearing for P25-07 at 6:32. The applicable substantive criteria are listed in the staff report. Testimony, arguments, and evidence must be declared towards the criteria described or other criteria in the plan or land use regulation, which the person believes to apply to the decision. A failure to raise an issue accompanied by statements or evidence sufficient to afford the decision-maker and the parties, an opportunity to respond to the issue, precludes appeal to the Land Use Board of Appeals based on that issue. Right, um, do any Commissioners have any personal bias?
No.
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 I have none. Conflict of interest?
No.
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 And I have none? Any expertise information?
No.
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 And I have none. All right, Angela, we'll go to you for the staff report.
Okay. Good evening. Good to see you all. Um, as I said, the Planning Commission doesn't typically review partition applications. However, this request is filed at the same time as the Zone Map Amendment and includes pre-existing conditions that require Planning Commission approval. I am not going to, you have the entire staff report, but I'm only going to highlight the, the two findings that pertain that are the pre-existing conditions. The rest of it all complies. Um, so I'll not going to be going through the whole thing. The applicant is requesting to partition an approximately 86,358 square foot lot into residential low-density R1 zone. The request is to divide the property into two parcels. Proposed parcel one, about 11,577 square feet, and proposed parcel two is about 74,781 square feet, which includes a flagpole access strip. The partition application is filed concurrently with the Zone Map Amendment, but approval of this partition is not dependent on the approval of the zone change. As for the findings, lot to width, lot width to depth ratio, the parent lot is a pre-existing non-conforming lot. Parcel one complies with the ratio, the required ratio. However, parcel two does not exceed, it's been a while since I've read, parcel two does exceed three times the width. However, it does not increase the property's existing non-conformity. And then in the dimensional standards, the home on parcel one has a south setback of about 3.8 feet, where five feet are required. This is a pre-existing non-conforming condition. Because of the flagpole access, the applicant proposes a 1.2 foot by 5 foot private, no build and maintenance easement within the access strip to help ensure compliance, um, as shown in the cropped site plan in your packet. There's a site plan that's blown up for just that section, so you can kind of see, and it should be highlighted. Conclusions, the applicant, the application shall be subject to compliance with the conditions listed below, as required by the findings of fact presented in the review criteria in Section 3. Any modifications to the conditions listed would require approval in accordance with the provisions of law. So the conditions of approval for this partition is the final configuration of proposed parcels one and two shall substantially conform to the plot plan reviewed in this application on Attachment B. Proposed parcel one shall be approximately 11,577 square feet, and proposed parcel two shall be approximately 74,781 square feet, including the flagpole access strip. Number two, the applicant shall provide separate utility connections for each parcel. The utility connection proposed parcel two shall be routed through the utility easement and identified on the final plat. Number three, the final plat shall show all access and utility easements, including, including the designated no build easement in the flagpole access strip benefiting parcel one. The applicant shall remove all buildings identified on the submitted, on the site plan as building to, building to be removed or portion of a structure to be removed prior to the signing of the final plat. The applicant shall submit a development agreement prior to the recording of the final plat. During the review of the partition proposals, the city shall require, as a condition of approval, the following improvements. Private access, where included, private driveways serving flag lots or private easement shall be surfaced per the requirements of the Development Code. Public facilities, sewer water, and storm drainage facilities may be required on and adjacent to the property. The developer shall submit engineering plans or facility improvement plans to the city for review. The plan shall address the required improvements contained in this article and any conditions of approval and shall conform with city engineering design standards. The plan shall be reviewed and approved prior to the recording of the final partition plat. Completion requirements, all required improvements shall be completed prior to the issuance of any building permits for the subject property. Alternately, the improvements required under this section may be assured through a performance bond or other instrument acceptable to the city prior to the approval of the final plat. Number seven, all development shall comply with the applicable standards of Sweet Home Municipal Code Title 17 and the Oregon Fire Code in effect at the time of development. Final survey of the approved plat shall be recorded within two years of the final decision. Failure to record a plat within the required time period shall void the approval and require a new partition application. The city manager shall sign the final plat if the plat substantially conforms to the approved preliminary plat, and if the conditions of approval are satisfied, the final plat shall conform to the requirements in ORS Chapter 92 and applicable county surveying requirements. The final plat shall be recorded with Lynn County, and copy of the recorded documents shall be submitted to the city. The applicant shall be responsible for all recording fees. No parcel shall be sold, transferred, or assigned until the final approved plat is recorded and evidence of the recording is submitted to the city. Building permits should not be issued prior to the recording of the final plat if the proposed structure will violate this code absent recording the partition. Nine, development of the subject parcels, parcels shall comply with all applicable local, state, and federal requirements. Staff recommendations, staff recommend approval of application P2507 with the listed conditions of approval in Section 4 of the staff report. Planning Commission action, in taking action on this partition, the Planning Commission will hold a public hearing at which it may either approve or deny the application. The decision on the application must be based on the applicable review and design decision criteria. If approved, the Planning Commission may impose conditions of approval. Staff recommended conditions are included in Section 4. Appeal periods, staff recommended that the Planning Commission's decision on this matter may be subject to a 12-day appeal period from the date of the notice of the decision as mailed. Order after the Planning Commission makes the decision, staff recommend that the Planning Commission direct staff to prepare an order that is signed by the chairperson of the Planning Commission. The order would memorialize the decision and provide the official list of conditions, if any, that apply to the approval if the application is approved. Motion, after opening the public hearing and receiving testimony, the Planning Commissioners' options include the following. One, move to approve application P25-07, including the conditions of approval listed in Section 4 of the staff report, adopting the findings of fact listed in Section 3 of the staff report, the setting of a 12-day appeal period from the date of the mailing of the decision, and hereby direct staff to prepare an order to be signed by the chair to memorialize this decision. Two, move to deny application P2507, including adopting findings, the setting of a 12-day appeal period from the date of the mailing of the decision, and hereby direct staff to prepare an order to be signed by the chair to memorialize this decision. Three, move to continue the public hearing to a date and time certain or for other. At this time, I'll close the staff presentation and ask if the Planning Commissioners have any questions.
Angela, why are we not reviewing this as a variance? A setback variance?
You can request a variance. This was a pre-existing non-conforming, uh, situation. Um, it wasn't created by the applicant, um, in order to develop the land, the others, the northern boundary, there was no room to put a, um, flagpole in, and so the only option there was, was the, the lower section. And so it's off by 1.2 feet. And so this was a solution we came up with because of the pre-existing. So you can, you can make the decision to go back and have a variance done for this, but because it's a pre-existing commission, condition, it's coming to you in this form.
Okay.
But you can choose to do that.
Okay.
And as a side note, also, if, according to state statute, if you are hearing an application that is a type three or four that the Planning Commission, or type four, not type three, that the Planning Commission, and there's two applications combined, even though one's administrative, you can hear, the Planning Commission can rule on both.
Can you just explain how the two applications are combined?
They're not combined, they were just submitted together. So, um, the other one is a zone map for the same property.
Right.
So, they're not, if you don't approve one, it won't affect the other in this case. So one is not reliant on the other.
Right, but we're going to vote on both.
Separately.
Separately.
Correct.
Do we want to have them presented together?
I, I think they're, they're two separate issues today, because the, they'll, the, uh, application to rezone, um, they can rezone this property even if we don't do the parcel, and they want to, either way. So we'll hear them separate. Um, do we have any other questions for staff before we move on to the, um, our applicant's testimony?
This neighborhood is whether there's school capacity, and I don't know if we address that anymore or not.
We do. Um, all of my notices go to School District. Um, they go to Kevin Strong. Um, and so they look at anything, right now, because it's a partition, um, they look really closely at like subdivision applications, or if we have apartment applications. So we actually do send reports to them, letting them know, and then, and I can tell you right now, I'm on their facility planning team, too. So, um, they do look at that, and they can, they make judgments on whether they're going to need new facilities based on some of the future development. Um, whether this affects it or not right now, I don't know.
And then, in this particular application, we really don't know what's going to go on in the back lot.
No, but this is a reminder, the property just to the south of it was approved for a large apartment complex. So, um, that's our, I mean, that was approved, it hasn't been developed yet, but that was in that same area. So. But, no, he doesn't, it's just a rezone, and there's many options for a rezone for in and R3, so.
When we say to the south, is that that big field?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
When we do the comprehensive plan map, however, that takes into account the schools in the area?
It does, and they, they have opportunities to comment on it. Um, and they're pretty good about asking questions, um, when larger developments are coming about and just kind of the future projections of how long we think it'll be until it gets developed. So they do ask questions, so.
All right, we'll move on then to our applicant's testimony. If you'd like to come forward. Please state your name and address for the record.
Hi.
What was that again?
Just state your name and address for the records.
James Hurley, um, 35890 Saniam Highway, Albany.
Thank you.
So, bought this property, um, currently has fences on both sides, took measurements, did everything, everything looked good. Um, talked to neighbor, fence has been there for many, 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 many moons. Um, bought it, wanted to partition it, um, and eventually do something with the back, I don't know yet. Um, currently just trying to sell the house portion of it, and, uh, once survey came out to do everything, they informed me that the corner of the house is close, and the fence is actually a foot and a half over on the neighbor's property. So, um, my measurements from a fence line were not proper, so we're stuck in that. So when I turned it into Angela, put the no build easement, so you get the partition portion, too, and our, the rezoning, so.
Okay.
That's about it.
What questions do we have?
So you have no plans at this time to actually develop the property, you just want to get it zoned and divided so in the future you can?
Yep. Yeah, I've gone through several things. I even thought about selling it to the neighbor who has that field that has a development. If it's all zone the same, maybe sell it to him and walk away and, but for now, I have no idea. I got too much going on to every other city, so I don't, till I can come back up here and focus on it, then I won't do anything, so.
Okay.
And you said that your plan is to sell the front house that's already there?
Yeah, it's actually already under contract, um, because I talked to title and everything, and basically I can't sell it until the partition is complete. So I thought that was a, going to be a, that side house, and then I knew I had to get so many readings in for the zoning, and when I talked to title, they said the zoning doesn't matter, that it just goes on there, so I can keep working through the zoning, and then they'll give them notification of the zone chain. So I listed it, got it under contract. I think we're set to close in 30 days, or when we can get this partition done. So I'd love to get it done, so I can actually sell it, get it over, and get somebody moved in there, because I don't like it sitting vacant and having to check on it, so.
All right. Any other questions? All right, thank you so much for your testimony.
Thank you.
Now we'll move on to any proponents' testimony. This is testimony from those wishing to speak in favor of the application. And we have none. So we'll go on to opponents' testimony, and that's testimony from any of those wishing to speak in opposition to the application. We have none. Um, if there's any neutral testimony, that's testimony from those that are neither in favor or in opposition to the application. You can come forward now. And we have none. Uh, so we will go ahead and close the public hearing, um, for discussion amongst the panel.
Well, this is not complicated. Um, just to make a comment about the flaglot, we typically don't like to approve flaglots, but in this case, we're talking about a foot and a half. Um, and given the configuration of the property, there really is no other way to have access to the back parcel.
I agree with that. Otherwise, um, that property would not be developable if we were not granting this.
This is basically just bringing the property in line with our comprehensive plan now. So it's, it's really not making a major change other than lining it up with what our map says now.
Everybody looking at me.
Oh, we're doing, just looking at that.
Well, there's just a few of my thoughts. It's already kind of in a path of the comprehensive plan, and we don't have a lot of choice with that. Uh, I kind of liked his comment about vacating the property line and including this with the neighbor to the south, but it's premature to decide whether that would happen or not. But I don't see any particular problems or reason why not to approve it at this time. But I will make the comment that there's more than one way to skin a cat, and when we put that little no build zone on the flaglot, I thought that was kind of creative. All eyes are on you.
Well, it seems very reasonable. That's a very long piece of property that I think probably the other owners or the long, the people that had it a long time ago probably just used that as their back area, but not everyone wants those huge backyards anymore.
Not that size.
And I agree with the sentiments, and, um, also, I was concerned when I read easement and flaglot, um, because we have run into some problems, especially with access to everybody who lives there, but this is, um, really minimal, uh, that we're looking at here. And the five foot to the, to the property line, although it's more narrow than we prefer in town, it's still large enough to be able to have access to that side of the house and be able to move around it. Um, so yeah, I don't see any, any reason.
And I am glad that we've got some provisions in there for future development of streets and sidewalks, particularly with the school so close, that, uh, we, we need to protect that decision.
Comments from our mission?
Are we ready for a motion?
Yeah, we're ready for a motion, if anybody has one.
I would like to motion that we move to approve application P25-07, including the conditions of approval listed in Section 4 of the staff report, adopting the findings of fact listed in Section 3 of the staff report, the setting of a 12-day appeal period from the date of the mailing of the decision, and hereby direct staff to prepare an order to be signed by the chair to memorialize this decision.
You have a motion to approve? Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Then the motion passes. Right, on we go. Uh, next, I'll open the public hearing for, um, ZMA 25-01 at 6:54. The applicable substantive criteria are listed in the staff report. Testimony, arguments, and evidence must be directed towards the criteria described or other criteria in the planned or land use regulation, which the person believes to apply to the decision. Failure to raise an issue accompanied by statements or evidence sufficient to afford the decision-maker and parties an opportunity to respond to the issue precludes appeal to the Land Use Board of Appeals based on that issue. We'll go to our declarations by the commission. Are there any personal bias?
No.
None. No.
No.
And I have none? Any conflict of interest?
No.
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 And I have none? Any expertise information?
No.
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 Nope.
No.
And I have none. All right, Angela, it's your turn. Staff report.
Right. All right. The applicant is proposing to change the zoning designation for property located at, um, Tac, or map 32AA, Tac Slot 500, an area of approximately 86,358 square feet. The request is to change the zoning from residential low-density R1 to residential high-density R3. This change would bring the zoning into alignment with the city's comprehensive plan, which already designates the property as a high-density residential. This application is being filed at the same time as application P2507, a partition request. However, approval of the application is not dependent on the partition application. The property is not located in the 100-year floodplain and contains no mapped wetlands or waterways. I will put a provision of that, the back end of that does have like a, a stream, but it's like a storm basin that's back there, so just to be aware of that. Um, but not anywhere where development would be. The site has frontage on Clark Mill Road and has existing access to city water and sewer services. The proposed R3 zoning is consistent with the comprehensive plan designation and policies. The property is large enough to accommodate permitted R3 uses without exceeding its physical capacity. Any future development would need to comply with the city code standards such as parking, landscaping, and setbacks. Adequate public facilities and services are available, and the location has appropriate transportation access. Rezoning to R3 helps the city meet its identified housing needs by providing more land for higher-density housing options. So staff recommended approval of application ZMA 25-01. Conclusion and recommendation, based on the findings outlined in Section 3 of this report, staff recommend that the Planning Commission make a recommendation to the City Council to approve this application, because this request is for a zone change, no conditions of approval are, are proposed. Planning Commission action, in acting on a zone change application, the Planning Commission will hold a public hearing at which it may either recommend that the City Council approve or deny the application. The recommendation should be based on the applicable review and decision criteria. The City Council will hold a public hearing and decide on this application. Motion, after opening the public hearing and receiving testimony, the Planning Commissioners' options include the following. One, move to recommend that the City Council approve application ZMA 25-01, which includes adopting the findings of fact listed in the staff report. Two, move to recommend that the City, City Council deny application ZMA 25-01 specifying the reasons. Three, move to continue the public hearing to a date and time certain or for other. At this time, I'll close the presentation and ask if the Planning Commissioners have any questions.
I don't have any questions.
I don't have any questions.
No questions.
All right.
No.
Then we'll invite our applicant back up for testimony. That's right, you were just getting comfortable. So just state your name and address again for the record.
James Hurley, 35890 Saniam Highway, Albany.
Thank you. Anything you'd like to tell us about this, uh, zone application that you didn't share before?
No.
All right.
Just put it into the comp plan.
All right. Do we have any questions? No. All right, thanks for coming up again. All right, that closes our applicant's testimony. We'll move on to proponents' testimony. That's testimony for those wishing to speak in favor of the application. We have none. I will move on to opponents' testimony. That's testimony from those wishing to speak in opposition to the application, and we have none. And I will move on to neutral testimony, and that's from those that are neither, um, in favor or in opposition to the application, and we have none. So I will close the public hearing for discussion among our commission. We pretty much discussed it on the last. Does anybody have any thoughts they want to share?
Because I'm so very new to this.
Yes.
Um, is, when we take it from R1 to R3, is a lot that size, is there a certain amount of houses that he would be allowed to put in the future? Like, is it very specific? It's like?
Yeah, yes. So, um, the lot sizes can be a little bit small, lot sizes can be a little bit smaller, plus there are more opportunities for a multifamily in those. in those areas and with it being so close to the commercial properties in that area, it would make a great transition and a buffer to our lower density residential homes by having the higher density more closer to the commercial and plus it's within walking distance to there's a coffee shop, couple restaurants, the dollar store, hardware store. I think those are all within a half mile walk. So it would make sense that we have more pedestrian up close to the commercial and reserve our lower density for our single families further back away from the highway.
Thank you for explaining that.
And that is not part of this application, except that it's a good question.
Yep.
It was just, yeah, truly a
Yep.
to understand.
Yep.
Thank you, guys.
Is there a specific limit for the R three?
There is, there density, let me bring it up and I'll tell you what it is.
When the meeting closes, I hope Mr. Hurley will stand around for just a moment. I do have a question that is not pertinent to the meeting.
So density regulations for the R three zone, single family attached and detached homes and duplexes, no more than one residential structure per lot or parcel, other than an approved accessory dwelling unit, maximum of twelve dwelling units per acre. Multifamily maximum of twenty-eight units per net acre.
Thank you.
It's a good question. Great. Well, then I'll look for a motion.
I would move to recommend the city council approve application Z M A twenty-five dash zero one, which includes adopting the findings of facts listed in the staff report.
I second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Then the motion passes. Do we have any staff updates today, Angela?
As you can see, I emailed the committee media policy to you guys a long time ago, but I hadn't seen you, so I figured I would print present a physical copy to you. It just states, you know, when you're talking out in the public or to media, the kind of the policy of how to do that and what it needs to be done. So I just want to make sure you all had a physical copy. Other than that, we're just, we're cruising along. There's been a lot of duplex partitions, primarily that's what I've been doing. So my list of applications are pretty tall on my desk. A lot of property line adjustments, a lot of the duplex partitions that House Bill four fifty-eight has been a very popular thing to do, so that's still plugging along. We have some development. The Coulter subdivision, they're working on the infrastructure, so when you hear people complain about forty-third or forty-fifth, it's actually going to improve. They're actually improving the entire system down there for everyone down there, so it's once it's done, it will be an improvement for everyone down there, but and then the only other thing I could say is Harvest Festival is coming up. I could really use some pie and chili judges or pie and chili to compete with, both of those things.
When's the cutoff for that?
Huh?
When's the cutoff for like having an entry? If you wanted to like put an entry in?
Technically, I will close it on, what was the fourth, the first?
Okay.
I did have to count backwards. The fourth is Saturday, so, yeah, and right now I was counting today, I have roughly eighty booths sold. I got some more today, so I haven't added up. Some people got two booths, so I haven't really. There's going to be quite a few people there. We have two live bands, we have a full food court this year, so it'll be a lot of fun. So even if you don't want to taste chili or pie, I would recommend you go.
So how many chili applicants have you got?
Right now I have eight and I can fit twelve. And all of the proceeds for the chili feed go to, all the funds will go to Lexi Vineyard's family. She is currently, she's a young girl who is fighting cancer right now, so all of the proceeds go to her. So.
It's a good one.
Before we rattle on with too many other subjects, my question was on parcel number one, I assume that they're probably going to be on city water, but the wellhouse was moved from one side of the property to the other side. Where's the well? Navesman at the driveway. That was just a little light catcher.
So.
All right, hold on, hold on.
We're still
You're going to keep asking questions, James, will you come up here, so?
It can be recorded.
Everything was all settled.
Oh, no, no, we haven't closed it yet, so.
We haven't closed?
No.
We were talking about chili.
Yeah, but just planning, just business, I was just doing just some updates, so, yeah.
So at the pump house, I'll move the pump house, leave the wellhead, and when I go to pave, I'll build a access over it, so I have a basically like your water meter, concrete basin type thing that you can access it for maintenance.
And my question doesn't make a lot of difference anyway.
I actually saw that and wondered the same thing, just we had a similar situation on our property too. It's kind of a pain.
Yeah, they were like, we want the well water. I'm like, okay, well, I'm going to move it over and they're fine with the easement and they're fine with everything and I was like, okay, usually people know I don't want that or I don't want this, so. They were okay with everything, so.
Thank you.
Good for you.
And just one more thing, so we've talked about this a little bit. I am working on another set of code updates. There's been a lot of legislation, legislation. I am trying to catch up on reading all of that, and so at some point, my goal was to do it by the end of this year, but we'll see how things go, because it's not going to be as big as when we did the Chapter sixteen and seventeen, but there's quite a few changes that are going to have to be done in there, so just that will be coming up hopefully before the end of the year and be able to get that in front of you guys, so.
Right.
Will there be any meetings coming up?
Not anytime in the near future. If I could give you guys all the partitions, then, but nope.
Boring.
All right. Well, then we'll go ahead and close our meeting at seven oh eight. Well done.
You did real well.
We all did.
First meeting.
Thank you. We shook off the dust.
I already kind of felt like we'd have a lot of people in New York, but I was surprised, right?
Right.
Okay.
Made it so easy on her.